All right. Kim?
Oh, Kim's here.
Can you hear us, Kim? She's on mute. You're on mute. Perfect. You're talking and we can't hear you.
You muted her?
No, she's on mute.
Oh, who was the mute on mute?
Do you put on mute if you have her number six shared?
It said, I made it by the hair of my chinny chin chin.
Kim? Can you hear me? Yeah, okay.
So can I hit the man?
No, no, no.
She's on.
Not me.
I know, but Charlotte, you just turned off the video.
Who's that?
Just unmute. It's her. She's muted. Because she's also off camera.
I'm good.
I can't see. I want to know. She was trying to exist.
Charlotte, can you see and hear us?
There. Nope.
Charlotte?
Let's see him.
Okay.
I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay, we hear you.
All right, it's six o'clock, so I'd like to start this select board meeting for Jan- January. February, we're gonna make it through this month. February tenth, and I'd like to start with a warrants. I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll number sixty-five for one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to move.
Voting?
She is, okay. We like to move.
Yes.
We accept accounts payable number sixty-six for two thousand six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-three cents. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to move that we accept payroll number sixty-seven for one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number sixty-eight for twenty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And this one was more expensive because it was our trio grant, which, or not trio grant, trio contract, which trio is our fund system that takes care of all of our accounts operating, so absolutely needed. All right, while I have people here, since there are people on Zoom and not, Charlotte, who is our our newspaper person, we love her. Charlotte's here and Kim is here. Kim is down in Florida. I don't know why she wants to be in Florida rather than up here, but Kim is with us. She's just here virtually. And in the audience today, we have Jim Paul Malus, our road commissioner is always here, John Henderson. And the two ladies in the back, we have Susan, don't tell me, Susan Gallagher and Chelsea Air, and we have Dylan. Dylan, what's your name? Mohern.
Mohern.
Mohern, okay.
You're on the floor.
All right. There's a mold?
I'm unrelated to the Moherns, as I all said.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, there's somebody down.
We're all from New York. It's.
Okay. All right. Next, I'd like to approve the minutes of January twenty-seventh, select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, do you want to sign it, Kim?
Sure.
Get your media sign for me.
All right, and next on our agenda is, and all of you should have an agenda, is our citizens issues. And first up on that is kelp herbicide use concern. And I'm gonna start with Susan, since you're the one that brought it up. And I just want to make sure that you speak loudly enough so that it's being taped. So that Charlotte can hear, okay? She might want to squeeze up here into this red section. And then, well, Dylan, have a better conversation about it.
Yeah, I'd like this to be more of a conversation than a presentation. So I do have some handouts that I can give out, but I wanted to make a few points first, so.
Wait, can you just, because anybody that's listening or watching doesn't know the history of how we came to this point?
Yeah, why did you explain that?
Yeah, I'm gonna explain that, yeah. So I was, I was driving past the newly developed Beaver Pond Preserve this past summer, and I observed a person with a, with a commercial sprayer. And I stopped and approached the person, and we had a conversation about what he was doing, and he told me that he was applying the herbicide glyphosate to eradicate the bittersweet vine. And that is the main ingredient in Roundup. That, that, that people can buy at the hardware store. It's a, there's a commercial formula that has the same ingredient, but it's glyphosate is the herbicide that's used. So I, I got very concerned about that because it is part of an estuary. And I started thinking about it and started doing some reading about it. I personally stopped using synthetic pesticides quite a while ago. I do a lot of gardening myself. And I found a lot of very good reasonable alternatives to using synthetic pesticides. So later that summer, I approached Andrew Morgan, who's the land steward director for Kelp. He was built, he was putting up the kiosk at that preserve. And he tried to reassure me that the spraying was okay, and we could either have the bittersweet of the glyphosate. And I've actually done a lot of bittersweet abatement in my neighborhood without using chemicals. I've had some neighbors help me just yank it out of the ground. It comes up pretty easy if the roots aren't too big. If they are big, we can chop it off and continue to chop it off, and it eventually will not come back. So in, I started doing a little bit of research because I because I personally stopped using synthetic chemicals just not, just having a basic understanding of why I didn't want to, I wanted to get into more organic gardening. I found out that in two thousand fifteen, the International Agency for Research on Cancer determined the link to cancer between, with glyphosate, it was specifically non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And then there were other studies that were done that suggested that exposure could cause other types of cancer. And since this is a wetland area, this application is a big concern. It is allowed by the federal government, but it's not recommended to be used in wetland areas. The glyphosate do degrade quickly in soil, but they do not degrade quickly in plants, so they could have impacts on animals and the tiny critters in the, in the wetland area. And there's also been some studies done on bees. How harmful they are to bees. Sierra, the Sierra Club did a bee study that showed a significant harm to bees through their gut biome. And other than causing problems with cancers, it also causes problems with gut biomes in animals and insects. So it's, it's worse like a, like an antibiotic, so it kills the good gut bacteria and makes it really hard for them to survive when they get bad bacteria. So I have some information on my handout that shows a lot of information about where, where pesticides are banned. There are several towns in the US that have actually, there are actually thirty-one towns in Maine that have pesticide ordinances. There are hundred, hundred and ninety communities across the United States that have pesticide ordinances. They're actually banned completely in Portland, Gannquitt, and Chalwell now. There are other cities, a small amount of cities that have completely banned, banned them. I also have information on my handout, just the several countries that have banned glyphosate. Our neighbor in Southport actually implemented a land ordinance that prohibits the use of pesticide and herbicide applications. And, and only allow, they're only allowed for household use, so they prohibited commercial use of pesticides. And so my ask is that we consider banning commercial use of pesticides and herbicides on Westport Island. And that is, that is what I wanted to present. And I have, I have some supporting documents in this binder that I'm gonna leave with you, and I also have handouts on the information that I just spoke on for anybody that wants.
So we definitely will. About one piece. I'm sure Dylan would too. But if you don't have enough copies on information.
Okay.
But definitely, and Charlotte, if you want anything, if she makes has a copy, she can scan it to you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So I just, you want to consider a ban of commercial, I was writing it down, and I, commercial use.
Commercial use.
What would constitute commercial? Would you say?
So any business spraying the herbicide or spraying herbicides in the system?
Something you're not doing in your home, basically.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, and, and actually, when Susan told me, I, I told her I was gonna contact Kelp because I knew that Kelp, it was Kelp property. And and when she was finally able to do some research and come in here, I again let her know and asked her actually if I could invite Kelp, because we had a discussion about, was not have Susan come in and tell her side of the story and have Kelp come in later. And and so Dylan is here representing Kelp. And Dylan, I know when I first mentioned it to you, you sent me a pretty long email, but what is your, what are your thoughts on Susan's?
Great. I always appreciate people giving feedback, and you know, I really like this place. I totally love this area. And I see a lot of value in the ecological and the unique uniqueness of this area. So I was actually the person running the backpack sprayer. So I am a main master pesticide applicator. Basically, I go through rigorous tests and am responsible for basically making sure that pesticides are used in a responsible way. I keep using the word pesticides because herbicides is classified under pesticides, you know, pesticide just being a chemical that is controlling and undesirable. Herbicides being specific to less. Yeah, so little bit, little overview of my job is I overview seventy-two hundred acres of land. About twenty-four hundred of it is preserves. So actually owned by County Backcountry Land Trust. Yeah, it's a lot of land, and I am of basically two full-time people who are responsible for overseeing it. You know, much of the area, you know, has, has human impact. Women kind of gauge human impact. You know, invasive plants are part of that. It's part of specific to Beaver Pond. It was an old film site. So bittersweet, burning bush, when you notice, multi-floral rose, barberry, those are all species down there. Basically, it was somebody's front party two hundred years ago and has been, has been left to, to grow and spread. And that area is, is very special, you know, great, great forest. There's salt marsh to the east. And, you know, when we think of the promise of perpetuity, promising that this land is going to be managed for its ecological value, we do have to make hard decisions sometimes. And, you know, for a while, yeah, we, we, we do do manual treatments of invasive plants. They are effective in certain places, just as chemical controls are effective in other places. Yeah, it's, you know, it's an opinion that people often think are counterintuitive for a mission statement, you know, instilling appreciation. I love, are you really? It's very helpful. I don't have it memorized, but yeah, like we are protecting this, the, the land, particularly within the estuary. Meaning that is one of three places in the entire world where inland water delta, basically multiple rivers meet together, so there is a lot of rare species. And at the same time, we do have a lot of invasive plants in this area, and you know, it, it seems counterintuitive that using chemicals to help protect rare plants is a thing, but it, it is part of the job. It is part of the promise of perpetuity that we are prospectively controlling these plants. And, you know, I, I've gone through a lot of different stages of my life of, of you know, weed whacking, knotweed for three months and not really seeing any progress. And, you know, these are chemicals that do work. I will say, the glyphosate, although it does have its, its huge downsides to overuse, you know, it is permeating our utilities and in our agricultural system. For my use, it is a, the risks are well understood, I would say. To, to me, the applicator, I, I wear PPA, personal protective equipment, glasses, coveralls, boots, gloves, and take that responsibility seriously to keep the public safe. So I, I believe Susan first was informed in the area, basically of our signage that says pesticide app. I don't have that, the wording memorized on that either, but it's standard signage that the state passes to post on publicly accessible areas. Yeah, so basically, we try to inform the public. I stay there during a period of drying. That is, that is the period that the public is most likely to be exposed to chemicals. Basically, after it's absorbed by the plant, it is contained within the plant. And the, the risk decrease signage still does stay there for three days after. I usually go to a different sort of signage. We have a very big sign, and then we go to a much smaller sign that is, is required by the state, just so people don't get alarmed and I'm not there. But I also want people to be able to water my plants at home. That's what I'm here for. Anyways. Thanks. You know, it is a I, I understand why people get upset about this, you know, it is, we all show love to land and for what it is. I respect that you've come into and wanting to have a discussion about this, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Well, you, you were very nice. And you stood there and listened. You were very open to.
My grandmother shared with me, I think it was food ache, and she was, she always wanted organic produce and all that, and I totally believe in the organic mission, and so my power to kind of way management, which is often a little less clear cut.
Can you just leave that? So in a perfect world?
Yeah.
You had manpower. Is this the kind of thing that could be accomplished with people? As opposed to using chemicals?
So, yeah, in, in, in a perfect world, it would be I will, I will say a seasonal staff underneath, and it is, it is amazing to see the lightbulb moment in their head when, like, I've had them basically use a brush saw, weed eater, people call it a bunch of things. Basically, weed whacker deploy. They'll use that for eight hours. They'll cut a bunch of honeysuckle down. It's something called mechanical pretreatment. It's basically taking a bunch of brush. Honeysuckle will re-sprout. And they'll, like, they'll see that within the course of the season. So at the beginning of the year, they'll, they'll spend eight hours weed whacking. And then they'll come back, they'll see that all their work basically has re-ground. And then they'll see instances of chemical control where I went out for an hour. Basically swatted some plants, sprayed some plants, and the plants are dead. And it's, it is like, it is a reality that you could do it. It is just, we don't have that much manpower. We don't live.
Oh, I know you don't. No, I don't either. I don't. So when you do the plants, let's say you have a bunch of bittersweet. It's huge.
Yeah.
Do you spray the whole thing, or do you?
So, so this is, yeah, so.
Chop it down and then just spray the roots?
So we're gonna get into a couple different controls. One of them, mechanical pretreatment, which I discussed is basically you're taking everything that's up high, and it would be sketchy to spray, like you're spraying above your head. And you cut it down and you come back, what, four months later, and everything's waist-high, and you could spray that. If you had the time and you had more concerns about like native plants coming in, you move to something called like more selective techniques, like cut stem. That would be like the classic, like you're cutting a thing of bittersweet, you're using some concentrated herbicide to like put it on the area. It stays contained within that species, and it's not what would be called a broadcast location. So that, that is something we do. That particular spot in Beaver Pond, it is about an acre of some of the, some of the worst invasive plant density I've seen. So basically, in order for us to begin, like, the intention there is not eradication. It is working around the boundaries to make sure that the area that is bad is spreading to the rest of the property. So it's very much working on the edges in that case.
So I understand this is a relatively new property, and you're sort of cleaning it up. What about the other Kelp properties?
So for the.
And is that utilized?
I would say, like, I don't have exact numbers. It really depends on the property. You know, it's knotweed is a big concern in a lot of areas, just because it's very strudel, it's very aggressive. You know, there's a couple spots with tarps that have been great. There's a couple areas we use a knotweed injector. Can't say off the top of my head because I've been doing this job for about four years. Each year brings different challenges, and as we kind of like control a location, but like, we still have to go back and, and like, do spot treatments. And there's not really, I run a GPS. There's not really a good instance of like being able to tell the density based on my GPS track. I'm doing a little more work to refine it, but yeah, I don't know. It, it is a lot less than twenty-two hundred acres. I would say that. It is not even. Yeah. The way I report numbers to the state are, are basically the amount of herbicide I use each year.
Okay.
So that's a concentrated blend.
But you do, you are doing it then on different locations, not just this one property?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So it, there isn't like a new issue to this proper, property. But yeah. Oftentimes, I like struggle to buy amounts of herbicide that I can use within a year. So like, the standard is selling a gallon or two point five gallons, which sounds like a lot. I, I know it does, but I often cannot go through that in a year. I, I can't find a supplier that will sell me smaller amounts. Yeah, so it's.
Even if it expires, what do you do with it?
So we don't actually, we, we tend to use the amounts we need within two years. So we store it in like a temperature-controlled location. For wherever to expire, there is special programs that you can like, it's, it's hazardous waste pickup.
Okay.
But I can, I can go all in all. The only thing you can throw away in this state is the one gap propane Coleman tanks. I've gone back, that I digress, but.
Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to say?
I do have some questions for Dylan.
Awesome.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you great.
Right, so is it fair to say that your decision to use pesticides is based upon the lack of manpower and the lack of ability to physically remove the invasive species?
So there is, there is a couple things at play. So some species, like knotweed's a great example. There isn't really an option to control it. So the most effective way to kill knotweed, non-chemical options, is tarping the area for twenty years. I, I know because I worked at a land trust that had tarped the area twenty years ago, and they took me to it, and they said, this is the only time we've ever killed that.
Say, what kind of tarp did they use?
It's a, it's a five-millimeter landscape tarp. It really depends on the species. Barberry, I would love to be able to rip up. The, the root goes in deep. It has spikes. I think you'll lose a volunteer in about two hours if you have to try to control barberry.
Are you the demo's ad?
Multi-floral rose, it is, I often control it mechanical pretreatment as I'm talking, I brush saw it, wearing a very thick Carhartt snowsuit. I do it now. That like, about two weeks ago, I was brush sawing multi-floral rose. You can't really do it in the summer, and it's really hard to keep on top of it. So it's, it, anything's possible with enough manpower is you know, it's effective use of time in some ways. You know, if I had all the manpower in the world, I would still do like, you know, we'd build more trails, we would do more impactful things.
Rather than kill.
We would also kill invasive plants. I'm not gonna deter anyone from volunteering with me. I would love to have more people that were down with killing plants mechanically. It's just, I've seen the light go out of a lot of people's eyes over time. It's, it's, it's a big issue in this state.
Kim, you had another question?
Yep, so I wanted to know Dylan's opinion of weighing out the benefits of using herbicide treatment versus the negatives of having an invasive species that's been there for two hundred years, continuing to to be there versus potentially causing problems to today's population with the use of your herbicide.
Yeah, that really gets into this idea of like climate change and resiliency. So as we kind of go into an unpredictable changing climate, we have more need for. Um, we have more need for, uh, biodiversity. So biodiversity being like rare plants, different species of, um. Common plants like maples that have different stressors, uh, they have different genetics. And so kind of as we move forward, we're having two simultaneous issues. So we're having climate change. Which is stressing a lot of our normal species we know and love. And we're also having a biodiversity crisis where. Land is being cleared, species are being removed. And also some of our preferred plants are are kind of occupying the states. So. Invasive plants are are spreading more and more and. Kind of the reason these plants are here in the first place is because they're able to grow wider, uh. Sets of, um, pressures. So basically, as we go into. Changing world, we are going to experience, our native species are gonna feel more stressed. And invasive plants are more able to fit into that nationality. So it's, it's kind of an under, under controlled thing, you know? Me personally, I I can't have a lot of effect on climate change right now. I can have a lot of effect on a biodiversity crisis, especially locally. By basically trying to make sure that our lands can be effectively managed. In in a way that allows for rare plants to grow. It allows for trees that have, may have a, um. Genetic component that makes them more resilient in a warmer world. Or more resistant to extreme water events. It's not really something like we can know. Think looking at a tree, but like as we move forward, uh. Basically having that space for native plants is important. And it's one of the few things we can do is exclude invasive plants from that. Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, but. On the issue of climate change and the warming and the changing climate versus. The volatility of invasive species versus native plants and and you see it in Maine already. Uh, those plants that historically have thrived just to the south of us. Are now thriving in s- in southern and up into central Maine. And species that never were able to grow in northern Maine ten years ago are now sprouting everywhere. So I think the whole idea of what's invasive versus what's changing because of climate, you know? If I find an oak tree growing in Holton, Maine, that's not necessarily an invasive species anymore. It's a, it's a species trying to survive because its habitat is getting changed. So it's moving along like. We're gonna have peach trees in Maine in a few years. Like, we're not able to control that. We are able to control what we do here. And my viewpoint is that invasive species do offer a problem when you look specifically at one spot of land, but. In the big picture of things, I'd rather use mechanical. And and even machinery is usable and you already use machinery. Much more, less problematic for our island residents and our water supply and our. Ever changing species than the use of herbicides that we know cause problems.
Yeah, so that's, that's, I, I will clarify two things. So there are. What what is an invasive plant? Uh, is, is, um, the, the. Dictionary definition is a non-native plant that is highly aggressive and competing gate of plants. In this particular area, when I talk about invasive plants, I'm usually talking about things that are not from this continent. So I think the argument for like, uh, a species like black locust, which is found in southern, uh, United States. You can make an argument that that is range expansion. It is in, you know, some. States classify it as invasive plant, but it is presumably a bird. Could have eaten a black loas plant and over the course of three hundred years, it could have gotten here inch by inch. Uh, I think the argument that some species like Asiatic bittersweet, which is only found in. Parts of, uh, basically Southeast Asia in China. It is a hard idea that over the course of the next three hundred years, it could have gotten here naturally. Without the, without humans, basically seeing it as an ornamental plant that is beautiful in the garden. Um, make wreaths out of it and then after it's done, throw the seeds in the backyard. Uh, yeah, I would say, you know, we, it would be cool. To have machinery that could control invasive plants. Uh, we are still trying to manage a, um. We are still trying to manage nature and trying to make sure that like, uh, we are treading lightly on the land. Uh, so herbicides is usually, you know, without the stigmatization of it, it is. One person usually walking around the woods and applicating, unlike like even the smallest. Escavator or forestry mulcher is at least eight feet wide, six feet wide and, um. You know, you're gonna hit some things, you're gonna crush some flowers and it is a lot. Uh, less selective than we're able to do. It's also very expensive is is the reality to it.
So Susan mentioned several towns where they had actually banned pesticides.
Yeah.
Completely. So how, does help have, um, a presence in any of those towns in itself? How do you handle it?
So we do not, um, speaking from my own experience, I lived in Alhaf Maine. Uh, they had a specific ordinance prohibiting. Basically, it was written in a way that was confusing to contractors, um. And made it hard for the town to enforce it and kind of, uh, the board of pesticide control to enforce it. Brunswick more locally has, um, created a ban on the city. Uh, employees from applicating herbicides, uh. It has created some perverse incentives where the town of Brunswick is contracting out. Uh, applications to non, non-city employees, um.
Somebody else to do it.
And there has also been comments, public comments about, um. How the sidewalks are looking a lot less, uh, manicured. Basically, there's a lot more plants coming in between, um, you know? Herbicides are used very widely, I would say, in a way that people often don't understand. For utility corridors and things like that, um. I I personally like would love to see, uh, better management of those, but I also am not a utility. Or was like, I didn't do that. Um, that's not my purview. Uh, it's just, it's a very complicated issue that really makes us look at like how. Our built infrastructure kind of is, how how it works. And I think like. It is a very easy thing to like, put some regulations on. I think, you know. You know, I always prefer. I like that I got my license because I think herbicides are a lot more complicated than people think they are. Uh, especially like, like I use by herbicides and I am absolutely terrified by having used them. I don't think he ever. Uh, there is a lot of that, um, I think it's a really, really complicated issue. And from, from where I sit, I mean. I, I don't know. I don't, I think.
You're standing, you've explained it well, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
So does anybody in the audience or anybody in this audience have any questions or comments or?
I, I do. So I'm, I'm wondering as you're talking, I guess I get it and I'm, I'm wondering if there are other. We know that there's a lot of glyphosate, there's a lot of.
Yeah.
Right? So I, full disclosure, I work for Mayor DeBauw Manzito, Manzito. So very familiar with a lot of this work, right?
Yeah.
And I understand that this, that this, it's a very complicated issue.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering, are there other pesticides, herbicides that could be used that are not quite as big of hit? For example, like such a big, that's a big strong chemical, right?
Yeah.
Are there other things that can be used that are a bit less? Hmm, I don't know.
Yeah, so.
To give the environment.
So, so taking the the larger view of glyphosate, it is a. Chemical that is not, uh, found in well water. Uh, so it it readily breaks down in the environment. It is very readily available to, uh, soil microbiomes. Uh, so basically soil breaks it down, sunlight breaks it down, it breaks it down very quickly. And it doesn't have a property called residual. So basically a residual is when a chemical. Remains to be active in the soil and instead of killing the plant you sprayed, it kills the next plant. Um, so there is a couple of other chemicals that, um, meet that. I've used the chemical, chemical triclopiers, um, it it is a more niche forestry chemical. That, um, people tend to not know about just because it is more niche in usage. You can't use it on grasses, um, it is about four times as more expensive than glyphosate. Um, and it has its own considerations, I would say. Um, only recently did they come up with a product that didn't cause, uh, irreversible. Um, so. They, they, they figured that. So, uh, but it is, it like, um. There are a lot of chemicals out there. Reason glyphosate gets used so widely, widely is because it does have a set of parameters that are favored for a lot of use. So, um, in agriculture, it can be, uh, kill a wide set of arrays. It is inexpensive, it can mix with water, um, and it breaks down readily. So it, it. You know, I wish there was a chemical that had less baggage.
Well, they, they, um, so Monsanto bio-bioengineered corn and soybeans and they're resistant to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so they could spray glyphosate on. The farm and it wouldn't kill these particular crops. Yeah.
But it gets in the plant? No.
Uh, it, well, it, the, the, the jury's out on that. You said there's a lot of research that needs to be done. I, I don't know about that.
Yeah, my.
Thousands of lawsuits.
Yeah, my point, there was one that was actually won in California, um. Uh, recently, so there, there's more to come on that. Um, but my point is that. We, we as a community should be try, should try to minimize the use of pesticides, of. Synthetic pesticides and herbicides, um. There is one other point I wanted to make, uh, so, uh, the Westport Island Stewardship Guide. Page twenty four has the following statement. Although weeds can be annoying additions to gardens and lawns, herbicides are not the solution. Besides the potential of human health threats, they can run off into coastal water. Or groundwater and threaten local ecosystems. Um, and with that statement, I just. I wanted to present that statement because I think with that in our town. Um, stewardship guide on our website. We're somewhat obligated to limit the use of herbicide, li- limit the use of herbicides and pesticides.
But I, I will say that, um, a few had contacted me and I brought it to the, um, board. Um, the entire board was pretty, um, shocked to know that. Pesticides were being used. Um, and that's when I contacted, um, Dylan right away, but. I feel like this is a, um. A situation that the town needs to know about and the town needs to make the decision. That's not something that we as a board, um. Can say, you know, it's, it would be a matter of, you know, if you're proposing an ordinance, Susan. Then that would be work that would be done with, with, uh, either with, uh, another group or it could be part of the planning board or whatever, but. Um, that, um, just know that we're already working on a warrant, and so if, if you wanted to, to do that. Work and work on that, you know, it really is up to the town. The town can stipulate, you can use this, but you can't use that. You can. You know, you could stipulate that, you know, you have to do everything that Dylan already does, or you can say we absolutely don't want anything. At all on the island. That's the decision I feel very strongly that the town needs to make it.
Yes, I, I completely agree with.
Yeah, but, um, having an ordinance, you, you know, it, it. There's a committee that works on that ordinance, but has input from the town and then the town makes that final decision about whether they. Approve that ordinance or not.
Yeah.
Um, I, I appreciate this coming to the board because. Even though not a lot of people look at the minutes or or, uh, look at the Zoom, but we've now made a pub. And this is the first time that it's really been made public. I mean, you've talked to me about it, but and I've talked to Dylan about it, but this is, you know, talk to the. Rest of the team, but.
I think, I think what you're saying is true, but. Bigger picture stepping back even more, I think we're talking more than just about glyphosate and and and.
Yes, pesticides.
That's, that's so. Well, yeah, I mean, first of all, you know, it's impossible to enforce unless somebody. You know, report somebody or, you know, people will still be able to technically do it, but I think the bigger picture is. When we start talking about our water source on the island and protecting it. That sort of falls under that. Now, this glyphosate breaks down in the soil, so it doesn't get to our aquifer most likely. But other pesticides may. So this might not be an ordinance just about glyphosate. It might be about a range of products, especially ones that would threaten our. Our aquifer, so.
And and ju- Dylan, just so you know, we have, um, we haven't gotten a final report yet, but we have been working for a couple of years now on a. Water, uh, we did a water survey for all the wells and, um. And we're working with, you may know her, Carol, um, White, who has done a lot of, a ton of work for us, a geologist.
Yeah, yeah, and, um. So. I'm hoping that the town will look at that very closely and as Lisa said, this might just. Fit right into that. We don't have any. Plans to do an ordinance anytime soon with the water because we haven't even gotten a report and we would have to have a lot of conversations with the town.
Yeah.
Um, to, to really, uh, educate them, but. I could see that down the road being part of that, but it, it could be that, um. That we look at an ordinance, putting together an ordinance for this, um. So, um. Tomorrow, when we have our regular workshop, maybe we can talk about a strategy to, um. To figure out how to move ahead, um, with this, whether we form a committee, um. That really looks at that, uh. April, do you have thoughts on how that might look or how we would want to do that?
Thought is, we are well on our play already. Susan is interested in this, you could spearhead it. Gather some interested people, research it, you know, bring it to this left board. It's up to them whether it's ready for prime time on the work or not. And even if they decided not, you could gather signatures on a petition and put it on the work. Um, so. I think it's probably better if someone outside of you guys, because we, it's. A lot of work, just getting work done as it is, works on that and then brings it to them. Um, and you could work with the planning board, for instance. I'm sure John, you know, would be happy to consult with you and. There's probably a lot of people on the island who would have interest, so.
I, I, I would be happy to do that. I, I have never done anything like this before, so I, I, I would need.
Already, so you're, you're ready, um, you read already on, on the role there, um.
Yeah.
So how about you, if you got a little committee?
Okay.
You know, and I, I'd like to see what you have there and see that.
Yeah, I could put it, I do a newsletter every month about my email and I can mention it in there, say, you know, if you're interested in. Talking about pesticide use and if there's anything the town can or should do about it, get to talk to Susan. You know, and that way you'll get, you'll hear from people, usually, could or don't.
Yeah. Yeah, so I have, uh, some documents in this book that I, as part of my research. There's, there's a ton of stuff out there. It's, um. It's, um, the. The fact is though, is that there's. Uh, there's evidence on both sides. I mean, it, it's not. Um, there are studies that show that it is carcinogenic and then the EPA has come out and said. That the levels that are, because of the levels that are used, it is not, so. Um, it may be more of a, um. A, a community base, um, how we want to run the. How we wanna, um. Regulate Westport Island and, and, and. Concerns that. Concerns for these chemicals.
So one interesting point, as a life of a tree guy. So he's borderline conspiracy theory about glyphosate, really hates it, talks about it all the time. Oh my God, what are we gonna do about that? On the other hand, he's nervous. So he uses insecticides, so. Brown to move. You don't want to be itchy all summer. You're gonna have to spray a bunch of pesticides all over your trees, right? So we used. It's a little organic pesticide, whatever the hell that means. Uh, but it's, you know. Snesty stuff, but I think like. Glyphosate, fake, it goes away quickly, so that's like the big selling point. So I would have been to be on your committee because he's kind of like, DNT. It's like soft green, but also.
Then he slays out.
Big man, do you want anything simple, you know?
Yeah.
Nothing wanting to. That's flowing all over your property.
It's true about everything we eat, you know, you put things in what we eat to keep it fresh along or whatever else. So every. It, it's always this tension.
Mm-hmm.
Between how much artificial, you know, any chemicals to use versus how much natural and. Um, as I said, early on, it's like this is a decision that the town needs to make. I think they need to be aware of it. Um, I know I wasn't aware of it, uh, and I love Kelt and we just assume that, um, you just pulled every single thing up by.
Contamination is complicated.
Yeah, it is complicated. So Susan, if you want to get with, uh, April later to let her know what she needs to put in her newsletter.
Sure.
And, um. And then we can get started on that and, um, like I said, the, um. Warrant items, oh, we need to get those. They're, they've got to be done by. May.
It's not gonna happen. It's.
Yeah.
I don't think it will.
I love you. Yeah. We'll see. Yeah.
Doesn't make it, you know, it's a long process to put ordinance together, get on the warrant, and if it did make it for June. There's another meeting in a year and there's special town meetings if it's, you know, so there. There's a lot of different groups that, you know, so don't feel like, oh, I gotta be, okay.
It's forever, you know? Well, last, this is a start, right?
Yeah, yes.
Just giving us a heads up and so we appreciate all of you coming and, and sharing this.
Yes, thank you.
Dylan for coming. Thank you, Dylan.
I know if you ever want, want me to do that. Thank you, Dylan. I do kind of hear me, you know, more forward than I said. I, uh. Perspicacious, I love them.
I was that woman.
I do.
Hi, uh, moving on, um. We'll go in, and, and you guys are welcome to stay or you can go.
Yes, I'm asking that.
Yeah.
Do you, do you want me to leave this with you or?
Yeah, I'd love to have a copy of, of what you were talking about and, and, um, so if you leave just one copy with April, we can get copies.
Okay. I, um. I have my research here, but if you, you keep.
I know. Um, when you have this committee going, you're gonna wanna share all that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
All right, well.
We got another Daisy now, just kidding. This one's not too.
Well done.
It's one everybody's very painfully aware of.
Yes, yes. So I have been putting it in the newsletter that we're preparing the warrant and then if people have concerns, they should let me know. Um, so somebody did reach out and her concern is one I think we all share, which is trying to make a left turn from Route one forty-four on interior line. Specifically, um, out at Norm's is pretty bad, although I would say the other one's pretty bad too. They're both, they're both pretty bad. Um, so we don't have control over that as a town. It's not part of our town. Um, I don't think Westcatson has control over that because it's DOT road. It's a DOT thing. Um, so. Couple of things we could do.
This one.
Yes.
We got you. Oh, you got lots of. I mean, you could go out that way, maybe. Um. We could put it on the warrant as a resolution. So towns, they will have declarations to entities they don't have control over, but they want to send a strong message, so. May, probably couldn't hurt. Um, the other thing that the DOT recommended last time I spoke to them about concerns with pedestrian safety and bike safety. They said anything you want done, put it in your comprehensive plan because they do look at those when they're coming back to repave every. Ten years, seven years, whatever it is. Um. So I've been thinking we should, I'm making a plan for those pedestrian bike safety. Issues, just to see maybe they can broaden the dirt shoulders a little bit for us or something. Um, but this would be another thing we could add to say. These are dangerous intersections. What can we do?
My proclamation that I've used for forty years. When traffic was backed up to Lannys. Every Friday through Sunday, traffic's nothing compared to what it used to be.
Yeah.
Is. Sometimes in Westcatson, you gotta turn right to go left. And I do it all the time.
I know.
It's not a good scene. I think they need a traffic light there. This traffic light instantly will install by years in. May help with some of that. May or may not.
Where's it gonna be again?
Uh, the intersection of Route one, the front room, the comfort room, right by the old Cahills gas station.
Ah, yeah.
There was a fatality there last year.
Pretty pussy.
That hill there, it was, um. We had a truck get hit on the other side of Route one that was filed on the intersection because. That's a steep hill that comes down and stops under there. So it is a dangerous intersection, um. But we'll see, you know, they say they're gonna have a street light there by years in.
Hmm.
They said it's twenty-seven, it's gonna be paved in the summer. They got over a mile.
I know, I know. Okay.
Let's see.
So. We'll just keep thinking about a little bit more and anybody who's in. About, yep, yep. But that segues very nicely into the road. Anything on roots, Jim?
Town things. And people need to understand that allowing snow out the end of the road or across the road is illegal. That's the example right across the street. That is against the law.
You pushing it across the road too.
If you're a driveway guy, it's blowing snow out of your driveway and down the road or across the street. Fire it and get a call. Not reggae. Uh. Roads narrow, there was a snow then. More snow is expected.
Mm-hmm.
You need, people just need to drive with a little sense and, uh, watch this speed. It's, it's all about the speed. It ain't about the road conditions.
Mm-hmm, it's about.
First thing they teach your daughter is that. You drive to the condition, so. When I read in the paper that due to road conditions, no. It's nothing to do with road conditions, it's to do with your speed.
Yep. I, I was shocked when I've seen a couple of the, the past storms we've had and they've had. A gazillion accidents, um, ninety-five, line two ninety-five, and it's like, in that, you know, all the, it's like. Every time they have a storm, I said, what happened? We got out of drive in the snow? It's, uh, so, yeah, we're, we're not slowing down.
No, people know and they want bare roads and you can see the white. All over the road and here we are, I was just talking about pesticides. And here we're spreading millions of tons of salt. All over our roads, which do affect wells, which do affect drinking water.
Yeah.
Because people refuse.
Wow, great.
Until they turn on their faucet. And get a nice glass of salt water, then I think, oh. I realize the evil of my ways.
Yes.
Yeah.
Though I bet you, I gotta guarantee it. Most people don't even consider that or think of that. No. No.
You're free.
The salt.
Look at the pine trees roam sign in the spring. It's all red.
Yeah. Oh, no.
They come back.
I'm not denying, I'm just saying, I don't think a lot of people make that correlation.
Right. I would request bridges every seventy-five years. Saltwater, you know, laying all the bridge up here, salt.
Yeah. Why not? It's extremely corrosive.
Because people, everybody. That drives in the winter time is paying a tax if they don't, don't live here. You could perfectly brand a vehicle in ten years, you have rough issues.
Mm-hmm.
You have electronic issues. So let's, uh, watch the speed. Watch out for the. The amateur snowplow guys. The.
It's good to, that you mentioned about.
It's more advice than, well, it's a wiggle when they never pointed up. You know, it's always where like, oh, turn lanes in there and they freeze and then they're there and sort of get a long way. It's very unprofessional.
Yeah, I noticed it today when I, I had left the island. Came back and, and I noticed several places, not, not necessarily on the island, but where it was clear that somebody.
Everywhere, I'm. And the reason this is fresh on my mind is just the other day I went. You know, go standing. And I'm standing. And there's piles, I met a car. And they had to stop because somebody had plowed out of a driveway and just picked their pile up and left the snow back and, and they ended up in a long car.
Mm-hmm.
It was all. Off because. I've got a huge truck on a small road and. They had to stop and we both. But, you know, that could have variedly, they decided to, well, I'm just gonna go around it, they're in front of that truck and I wouldn't even. Help employees.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, we're gonna move on to committee reports. Um, Kim. Goes to the left, so we, there she is. Kim, any update on, um, the, um. Property management?
Oh, let me think about what we've done since I saw you all last. We got the cameras hooked up at the right landing house. So that's a good thing, um. Jack and Gay went through and marked out all the electrical so that we now have a technique and a method for hooking the generator up if need be. Hopefully, we won't need to, but that's, but that's done and that's ready. Um. And that's pretty much all I got.
All right. Um, John, you're from the planning board. Do you have any update that you want to give us?
I don't, I don't. We're still honestly set for Wednesday. Thank you very much for the sign. I think that's wonderful. Oh, so we don't, nothing new. Yeah.
And it actually segues right to the. Record business, which is just to. Uh, remind people that, um, there will be a planning board hearing. Uh, six o'clock on Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, here, here at the town office, um, right in this room. Um.
It's a regular planning board meeting, but first of all, you know, the hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the, the agenda.
Do you want to tell people what hearing on, right?
Uh, the people be on the pier, um. Not the pier, the, um. Uh, commercial fishing and marine, um. Activities. Um. Zoning for, uh, a piece of property. Um, at the north end of the island. Um, Taya Christie has, um. Asked about that and so, um. The butters have questions and said that this will be a chance to share his thinking about it. He has actually been to a couple of these meetings and mentioned it, so this will give him a chance to publicly share exactly what he. Is thinking about and the butters can ask questions and, um. And then the planning board will give the, um, give them. Select board some advice on, on that issue. Um. All right, um, next on the agenda is. An engineer and report for the fire department building. Um, I guess in two thousand fifteen. There, uh. Was a report done by engineers. Um, I'm not sure why it was started or whatever, but, um. It could be just because they, they, um. MMA or, uh, main municipal who ensures us. Um, comes and does an inspection periodically. And, um. So in two thousand fifteen. They inspected the town. Fire. Uh, department. And I'm looking for the message that I got from them. Um. And.
Well, first, yeah, yeah. Go, go ahead. I was gonna say, they, they, they presented a report and basically nothing was done and then the MMA insurance inspectors came around the island and looked at all of our buildings. And, uh, basically laid out all the problems with the firehouse. And then Ashley asked if, and, and they requested, they said we probably have to have an engineer look at it and, and, um, Ashley asked them. If, if it would suffice, she did send it to them, the old engineer's report. And basically what they said was it's obvious that there's, issues still exist and nothing was done about them at this past time. So then their response was this.
Yeah, so basically they, um, said from ten years ago. That it was noted that the fire station had significant structural issues. Based on the age of that report and that it does not appear that, um, any of the report's recommendations were completed. We would request that a new engineer report be completed. That means going out and hiring a new engineer. Due to these revelations, we have amended the coverage on this building. Effective today, one thirty, twenty twenty-five, coverage has been changed to actual cash value. Depreciation is considered and the deductible has been raised. To ten thousand dollars. So basically our deductible has gone up. And we have less coverage. When the new engineer's report is made available, please forward a copy. Depending on the new report. We may need to take further underwriting action for this building. If you have any questions, please let me know. In other words, ten years ago. They discovered that there were a lot of structural damages to the fire station. And, um. From what we can tell, there has been no action taken. Um, and when they did a site visit, uh, last month, they saw that nothing had been done. So they are now saying because of that, um, we're, it's getting insured even less. And depending on what the engineer says, um. It could get to the point that there is no insurance or that they don't allow, or they won't insure. Vehicles that are in there. Um, so we're not. Sure exactly what the outcome will be, but we do know that we have already been told that our insurance is a lot less now. We have a lot less coverage than we had, um. Because we have not taken action on the, uh, structural. Um, efficiencies to the building. So, um. Ashley is in the process of trying to find an engineer. We're looking at potentially doing, using the same engineer we used before. Um, we have to find out just how much it will cost and whether there's money in the budget to do that or whether we have to have a special town meeting. To ask for money to do the. Um, the engineer's report. And that's just to do the report, not to fix any of the issues. So that's, um. Not a good news item that we came up with, um, this week. Um. Anything to add? Um, you have your two. Three. No, nothing you should know. All right, um, we'll keep you constant on what we've actually do with that. Um, there was another, uh, agricultural license application, April. Do you have anything to?
Yeah, this is, um, for Kevin McMahon, who, um, has already had an agricultural license and he had a very small, like, so tea. Oyster operation out by Wyndham Island. Um, and this is just adding to it. He wasn't able to attend, but he emailed me and said, um. This LPA merely places oysters in the ocean bottom where they have resided for thousands of years. Um, so. Uh, I don't think that, you know, there's gonna be much impact or anything.
I mean, is the public, um. Comment over on this?
Um, it'll be over tomorrow.
Okay.
We get notice and then there's two weeks, so because your select board meetings run under two weeks, sometimes it's a little tight.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we don't have any. Any say in this, it's just better information.
Just acknowledging that, yes.
There are quite a few.
Just acknowledging that, yes, there are quite a few, uh, oyster farms now, something we may, um, wanna look at to, to really help make sure that local farmers continue to be able to, to, um, to farm oysters, um. All right, um, approval of town hall projects RFP. April, do you wanna give us any little background on that?
Yeah, so we are continuing to work on, um, trying to line up contractors to work on the town hall projects that were approved and that some money was set aside for at the last town meeting. That is fixing the front of the town hall, adding an ADA compliant ramp, and eventually, um, adding an ADA compliant bathroom. Um, so we put out RFPs last fall, we got crickets back, and so we took a step back and we just kinda beat the bushes and asked for estimates and spread the word that way, and we did get a few estimates in recently, which is really great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, at least a few of them are coming in over twenty thousand dollars, which triggers our procurement policy um, that we need to put it out to informal bid. So we're gonna do that again, and hopefully these contractors will be willing to work with us and resubmit estimates as formal bids. Um, and maybe we'll get some new bids as well. Um, so we can at least get started. I'd like to get it moving before the next town meeting, so we can show we've made some progress and.
So basically, what we're gonna do tonight is just, um, approve these, um, RFPs or request for proposals for one, the construction of the town hall entry, entryway structure and, um, the RFP for the town hall front.
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept these, um, RFPs that will then go out to these different contractors. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Um.
Bye.
Bye.
I heard that. All right, uh, next, um, uh, our agenda is, uh, the appointment, we've been, uh, challenged trying to find board end, um, what's the other one?
Fields board.
Fields board, yeah.
Alternates.
And we just lost, um, we approved the, uh, the resignation of, um,
Archie.
Archie, yeah.
Dick.
Then Dick came on, so.
His boss.
Um, this would be the planning board alternate number one. We still need a second alternate. But, um, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint, uh, April Tibodo as planning board alternate number one. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Can I just say, um, I'm really interested in ordinances, um, I have to work on them.
I never knew you were, did you?
I know, it's.
First time here.
I know, I know. Um, but no, I find them really interesting and I have to work within them all the time, always referencing them, so I think I have my head in it more than most people do, simply because I do it as part of my job. Um, so I thought, well, we can't find people, I might as well take that knowledge and put it to use. And I think it will be good to kinda have that bridge between the select board, who I'm constantly in touch with, and the planning board. Um, so, yeah, I'm excited to.
And also you double-checked that there wasn't any conflict, but.
Yeah, we checked with MMA.
Right, right, right.
No conflict of interest unless it, or people realize that personally pertains to me and then like any other planning board member, I.
You have to, yeah, recuse yourself, yeah.
Well, I can't speak for the board yet. Personally, I'm very excited, and I don't know why I couldn't ask you to, uh, beating the bushes and you would be a preferred, uh, preferred addition.
Thank you. I wasn't waiting for someone to ask, it just occurred to me too, I was like, oh, guess I could do that, so.
And I get a quick question, uh, did Archie formally surrender?
No.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, in a couple of weeks.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah, yeah, we set up, I, I think we made it official.
We're too much, you know, you were, you were, you were gone, yeah. I said you found me this resignation letter.
That's all, I could, I didn't think of that, so I.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we did.
Take the next step, so, good.
Yeah. Um, last on our agenda that we have planned here is March meeting schedule. And I know at some point in time we need to come to weekly meetings, but it doesn't quite feel that way yet. But we're still looking at April, um. I feel like, once, once we get really going with the, uh, warrants, then we'll need that, but, um, we have, our next board meeting is the twenty-fourth.
Mm-hmm.
So I would propose the tenth and the twenty-fourth of March. Is that okay with you, Kim?
Yep, that sounds good to me, the tenth and the twenty-fourth.
Yep, and we still will have our, um, our weekly select board workshops from four to six on every Tuesday, and, um, and we also have a select board workshop at five o'clock on Mondays when we have our board meeting, um, and that's an open meeting that anybody is invited to attend. So, um, there aren't any other questions or concerns, uh, John?
Do you all have a hard date for, uh, submitting any proposed ordinances? Uh, some of our, you've been working on some things, but without any urgency, so, uh, if they wanna get something down and in your hands or want, or want to get a hard date for.
That's an April question, yeah.
Well, you guys are gonna finalize the warrant in.
In May, early May.
There, yeah, there has to be hearings and stuff on the ordinances before you sign the warrant.
Right.
So you wanna kind of push back, you know, a good thirty to sixty days. I'll look at my timeline and give you a better idea, but the sooner the better.
Yeah.
So we can sort of.
Maybe by, by in March, if at all possible. Cause then you have April timeframe that you could be doing hearings.
The hearings.
And then it can go on to.
And sometimes you have to amend an ordinance after a hearing.
Well, you wanna send it to attorneys, you figure two to help them look at it.
Yeah, probably, yes, yep.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
All right, um, if there aren't any further questions or comments, then I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we adjourn tonight. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, you guys.
So.
Thank you, Kim. Enjoy some time on the beach for us.
Thank you.
It's not seven P M.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're doing that. You're not, I don't hear it, nope, I just, I'm just gonna, you got a good chance for being.
Here.